Welcome to the regular City Council meeting, September 11th, 2017. If you please stand and I'll ask Councilman Forrest Fleming to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Here's a recital which stands, "One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All."
Thank you, and please be seated.
Thank you, Forrest. I'd like to call on Pastor Wayne A. Johnson with Shiloh AME Church to deliver an invocation. Pastor Johnson?
May we pray. Our divine Creator in whose presence we stand, we are grateful for this opportunity. We thank You for life, and we pause also to remember those who sixteen years ago lost their lives because of a vicious and cruel act. We pray for the world in which we live. We pray for our nation. We pray for our state and for our city. We ask that in these chambers that justice will roll down like water and righteousness as a mighty stream. This is Your world; You have created it, and we thank You for it. Help us to be good stewards of the land in which we live. Bless us this day. Keep us. May we always remember, the coinage on our currency reminds us, "Happy is that nation whose God is the Lord, because it is in God that we trust." We ask all of these blessings in Your majestic name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Johnson. I'd like to introduce City Council to my far-right Forrest Fleming, City Council. Louis Vina, City Attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, the Mayor. To my left, Sally Sandy, City Manager. Sidney Simmons, Councilman. John Cantrell, Mayor pro tem. Kelly Russell, our Recording Secretary. Becky Brinkley is interpreting for the deaf community. We have some retiree resolutions tonight. I'd like to read that first resolution. It's honoring William Shane Pulp. Whereas William Shane Pulp was employed by the City of Morganton as Public Safety Officer, B.L.E.T., trainee in the Public Safety Department on August 15th, 2008, promoted to Public Safety Officer, Trainee on December 15th, 2008, promoted to Public Safety Officer on June 15th, 2009, and whereas William Shane Pulp has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the Public Safety Department and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for nine years, and whereas William Shane Pulp retired from the City of Morganton as Public Safety Officer in the Public Safety Department on September the 1st, 2017, and whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of William Shane Pulp and express appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the Mayor present this resolution to William Shane Pulp, adopted this 11th day of September, 2017. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, Clerk. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. I'll ask Councilman John Cantrell to present that.
Thank you very much for all of your service and wish you the best of luck as you go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to call Chief Rector to the podium for a presentation.
Shane, on behalf of the City Morganton Department of Public Safety, we'd like to present you with your service weapon, let you know that we do appreciate your service to this community, and you will be sorely missed.
Thank you.
Shane, would you like to say a word or two?
It's been an honor serving my community. Of course, you all know I live here. I've been here assisting Morganton 24 years. It's been a great honor to serve this community. I'll continue to serve this community, just in different capacities. I'm leaving public safety, which is a sad moment in time for me, but, you know, I'm not leaving my community, I'm not leaving my friends. You all still brothers and sisters. I still love you all and look forward to working with you in a different capacity in the future.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We need to have another motion, Council, about the, from the retiree. We have the motion to accept the resolution. We need a motion to declare surplus property, please.
I move we declare a surplus weapon Glock 40 caliber, serial number XHY528, model number 22GEN4, and fire helmet Carnes 1044, serial number 102477956, to be declared surplus, sold for $1 and presented to retired Public Safety Officer Pulp.
That's a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I'm paying the dollar.
The dollar has been passed.
Oh, I've not seen that on the table.
Thank you so much. We have a presentation of a service pin to Mr. David Wakefield. David is a senior plant operator with the Water Resources Department. He has a pin for 30 years. I'll ask Councilman Sidney Simmons to make that pin. Presentation, if David will come to the podium, please.
Fifteen minutes, now's all you get.
That's all I need.
David, you've been a good employee, a fine neighbor, and a good friend.
Thank you, Sidney. I appreciate it.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm leaving.
Okay.
You've got fifteen minutes.
Thank you for coming.
Shane, we're not clapping, we're not clapping that you're leaving.
Yeah.
Just for appreciation. Thank you so much. Under public advocacy tonight, we have some upcoming events. We have comma, the Back Porch Series, which includes the Moore Brothers Band on September the 14th at 7:00, the Dirty Dancing Movie, September 21st at 7:00, Off the Wall, September 23rd at 7:00, and So Good for the Soul on September 30th at 7:30. The Farmer's Market is open Saturdays behind the Old Depot and on Wednesdays at North Green Street. We have the Historic Morganton Festival recap. Sharon here, Sharon, if you'll come forward and give us a cap. The weather was great for you this year, so I think everybody had a good time.
They did. I think everybody had a great time. I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, I think that the festival did exactly what it was designed to do, and it's when we first set it up, and that is to bring people to town, to get them to know what we have to offer, and also to offer the opportunity for our nonprofits and our churches and our clubs to raise funds. And we made some phone calls today, and we had our nonprofits, churches, clubs, folks like Tumblemania, if you will, so cheerleaders. We had funds raised from $500, as low as $500, which is low, to $10,000 this weekend that directly go back into this community, that put kids either in mission trips, or allow them to cheerlead, or allow whatever, you know, that is supported to happen. So I think that it certainly did what it was designed to do. It was an amazing weekend. I have to say that I'm always so impressed with all the volunteers. We have over 200 some volunteers, and I mean it sincerely when I say there is no job that is too small. And I think those students, I hope they hear me tonight again, say how much I appreciate all the students that came from Freedom Patent and Drawn. And they came, they worked all day long, they helped us keep the food area, which was over the top this year in sales, and so obviously there's always a lot of trash, if you will, but they kept the tables cleaned, they took the brooms out, they never complained, they didn't say a word. It was absolutely awesome. I also want to tell you that I was really blown away Saturday night that by 12:30, our staff, which is a mixture of, yes, city employees, but as equal mixture of volunteers, and even many of those city employees, which I know a lot of you don't know this, but some of those city employees do not even take the overtime or anything, they just want to be out there, so they are considered volunteers at that time. At any rate, by 12:30, they had everything cleaned up, and thanks to, which I still can't believe, recreation, I think recreation, public safety, and the electric department are on a warpath to see who is really the best department. And so we had part-time firefighters out there, an incredible team of recreation, public works. I checked online, I'm at 3:00 in the morning. I have a feeling they left somewhere around 5:00 in the morning, and obviously with the rain now, the last of the marks will be off of downtown. So there is no department that I should leave out, because honestly, everybody pitches in, all of the council and the mayor pitch in, and I am sincerely appreciative, and I can't thank you enough. And I will tell you that I think that we pulled it out enough this year in terms of making money that we will get to have another Historic Morganton Festival. I'm not going to lie, I was very concerned. We've had three hard years, and I think people should know that. We make our money through sponsorship, and through percentages of food, and through vendor sales, and that's all we got, folks, and beer sales. And I was very concerned that I would have to tell you this would be the last year, but I do think we've made enough that we can put in the bank and pull out another year, so I feel good about that, and I hope this community appreciates all that you folks do and all the festival does for them. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. Great job. I would like to announce that North Carolina Department of Transportation is having a litter sweep on September 16th through the 30th. It's a bi-annual cleanup drive. If you want to volunteer, you can go to the NC DOT website. We have one award tonight, the 2016 North Carolina Area-Wide Optimization Program Award. Here tonight, I believe we have Don Price with the Asheville Region of NCDEQ, and I think Brad Boris is going to accept it. You'll come forward, please.
If I could, I'd like to just make a few comments regarding the value of water. First thing I'd like to do is thank the Mayor and Council and the staff and all here with the City of Morganton, but I'd like to give you a quote from Benjamin Franklin, who says, "When the well is dry, we know the worth of water." And with that quote, I'd like to offer a couple of observations. We live in a world where the average cable TV bill now is about $103 a month. Cost of this service is going up at a rate that's four times the rate of inflation. The average cellphone bill for an individual is now about $73 a month, and that's an increase of 50% since 2007. I've recently seen family plans that start at about $160 a month, and that's plus taxes and fees, of course, and you guys have seen the cost for a gallon of gasoline, it's over $2 now. But I was in a grocery store the other day, and I noted that bottled water was on sale. A 24-pack of 16.9-ounce bottles was $2.48. When you do the math, that equates to about 78 cents a gallon. Well, at the same time, a residential water customer here in the City of Morganton, who uses 5,000 gallons of water every month, pays a bill of $14.40, if my math is correct. That equates to about .3 cents per gallon, and that's a real bargain when you do the math. So in our civilized society, we often accept the increased cost of these essential items without a second thought, but yet when we open our water bill to find it's gone up a couple of dollars, we're calling our neighbors to begin organizing protest here at City Hall. Well, there's truly only one of these items that is essential to our survival, and that's water. And that water needs to be safe and reliable. And while 71% of our earth is covered with water, approximately 97% of that water is saltwater, which despite our technological advances, is generally cost-prohibited for use as drinking water. Therefore, approximately 3% of the water on earth is fresh water. Of that 3%, almost 70% of that water is locked up in polar ice caps, glaciers, and permafrost. So we're down to less than 1% of water on earth that's available to sustain our existence. So it's important to manage and care for this precious resource. And as you've heard explained in years past, the Area-Wide Optimization Program, or AWOP, award was created by the EPA in 2002, and it's awarded to water treatment facilities which consistently achieve an enhanced level of water treatment that exceeds regulatory standards during any given calendar year. Specifically, the treatment goals associated with this award target the treatment plant's ability to remove turbidity from the treated drinking water. Turbidity is a measure of the clarity of the water. The objective of this enhanced turbidity goal is improve public health protection. Studies have shown that achieving the enhanced turbidity goals associated with this program provides a tenfold reduction in microbial contaminants in the finished drinking water. This includes Cryptosporidium and Giardia parasites, which are known to cause intestinal illnesses. There was a representative from Public Water Supply Section here last year, as I'm Public Water Supply Section Rep this year, to present the same award for the 2015 calendar year. This is for 2016. And I'm here to present this award. This is the third consecutive year and the eighth overall year the City of Morganton has received this award. I understand that this award is only possible through the dedication and hard work of Brad Boris, I don't believe Jason Green is here, but Jason Green, and the other operators, and all the staff that you have at the water treatment plant, and most importantly, the support of this council. The fact that this is the eighth year receiving this award demonstrates this community's commitment to providing safe, reliable drinking water. As a representative of North Carolina Public Water Supply Section, I can say that your efforts are very much appreciated, so I would like to congratulate all involved. You need to be very proud of the personal commitment and often unheralded work that your employees do every day in achieving this award and managing this planet's precious resources. Thank you all very much.
All of the staff at the water plant, they come to work every day, they work hard, and they're definitely dedicated to provide the best drinking water that they can to the citizens of Morganton, and seeing them recognized for this, with this award is, makes me very proud to be their director, and I really appreciate the support that you guys give our department. Thank you so much.
Brad, thanks for all you do.
And I'd like to invite Don back at budget time next spring.
Next on our agenda is a proclamation for National Recovery Month for 2017. Whereas National Recovery Month is a national observance that promotes the society benefits of prevention, treatment, and recovery for mental and substance use disorders, celebrate those in recovery, applauds the contributions of treatment and service providers, and promotes the message that recovery is possible. And whereas preventive treatment, preventive efforts to address mental health and/or substance use disorder works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming substance use disorder is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles both physically and emotionally, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas substance use disorder is a major public health problem that impacts society on multiple levels, and whereas according to the 2016 Community Health Needs Assessment for Burke County, our community is one of the highest in North Carolina for unintentional medication drug overdose death rates, along with a 22% increase in EMS responses to overdose cause. Burke County Highway Patrol found that 58% of DWIs were not alcohol-related. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, Burke Wellness Initiative invites Burke County residents to participate in activities held to recognize National Recovery Month. Now therefore, the City of Morganton and I, Ronnie Thompson, is Mayor, to hereby proclaim September 2017 as National Recovery Month in Morganton, North Carolina. As the Mayor, I also call upon citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, business and schools in the city, to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of substance use disorder and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with substance use disorders in order to assist them with overcoming complications and struggles that will allow for daily living and wellness. Adopted this 11th day of September, 2017, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Clerk. Do I have a motion to accept this proclamation?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'll ask Councilman Forrest Fleming to present this to Kim James from Burke County Health Department, and Sheriff Steve Wist, if they'll come forward.
Thank you both for all you do for the recovery program in our county. Thank you so much, and we appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you, congratulations.
Kim, would you like to say something? Kim, please.
Yes. Actually, I'm from Burke Recovery, just to clarify that really quick. We do have a couple of events that are happening in September in celebration of National Recovery Month. The first is this Saturday, and we invite all of you to attend the Rally for Recovery. It'll be at the Courthouse Square from 10:00 to 2:00. It's actually a celebration of recovery. If you think that you've never been touched by substance use, then you need to look around again. It's amazing how many of us are touched in ways that we don't realize. We also, in response to the Community Health Needs Assessment, are holding a community forum on September 28th, and that will be at the Foothills Education Center, and that starts at 7:30, free breakfast, and goes until 12:00. You notice I'm throwing out free so that everyone wants to come. But to discuss the issues that we're facing with substance use in our community, specifically looking at the professional aspects as well as the personal aspects, and then trying to develop a community action plan. We realized in planning this forum that we needed to have two forums. Either that, or people would be at the forum for 12 hours. But our second forum, which will be held in October, is actually focusing more on legal aspects, and Steve, if you want to, do you want to talk about that forum? Okay. We're focusing on legal aspects and talking about ways in which we can impact our community on a higher level, looking at in the court systems, in the criminal systems, and figuring out what our response to that should look like. This is a community effort. We need the investment of the entire community. It's not just one organization like Burke Recovery, or like the Sheriff's Department, or the Police Department. It takes everybody, from every single home, to neighborhood, to church, to community, to city, to county, and even bigger. So we ask that everyone in this council will be there, and everyone in this room is certainly invited to attend all of these events. Thank you very much.
Sheriff, would you like to say something, please?
Just quickly, I would like to thank this council for joining the other councils and the boards for the collaboration. There's so many professionals and volunteers who have come together to try to reduce substance abuse. I know that I can say along with your Public Safety Director that substance abuse drives crime, and we want to reduce crime and at the same time reduce the pain and suffer that comes from the opioid crisis that the city, county, state, and the nation is experiencing. So thank you for your support and your effort in partnering with so many people that want to make a positive difference in the city and the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next on the agenda is a proclamation for Constitution Week 2017. Whereas September 17th, 2017, marks the 230th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Ronnie Thompson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Morganton, to hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness thereof, I have fixed my seal, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Clerk. And I'm going to ask Louisa Emmons from the DAR region and Alice to come forward, please, as I make a presentation.
Thank you so much for being here. I'll let you make comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Quaker Meadows Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution is marking the 230th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States with Constitution Week, September 17th to the 23rd, to promote the patriotic objectives of our society. We provide many hours of volunteer time and financial support to American service personnel in conflict zones. We participate in naturalization ceremonies for new citizens, and we offer patriotic awards to deserving individuals. On August 2nd, 1956, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed the bill which required the President to proclaim each year the week of September as Constitution Week. The purpose of this observation is to renew appreciation for the Constitution and this country. This great document, the guardian of our liberties, established our republic as a self-governing nation dedicated to rule by law. Constitution Week provides an opportunity for all Americans to recall the achievement of our founders and the nature of limited government, as well as the rights, privileges, and responsibilities of citizenship. Thank you for helping the Quaker Meadows Chapter, DAR, to observe this special event in history.
Thank you all so much for coming today. Next on the agenda is something that did not get on the consent agenda. I'd like Mike Hassan to come forward, please, to the podium. Mike helped organize the very first Women's Fast Pitch Softball League this year. We had teams who come across the state, 15 newspapers and two TV stations, and Mike, I'd like you just to inform the community sort of what went on. It's the first ever done in the state. It was hosted by Morganton. I know the Recreation Department did a great job getting the field ready, and the people I talked to from Rowan County and from Cabarrus County and Rutherford County really appreciated it. So would you give us sort of a highlight what went on, and can we expect to see more people coming here for tournaments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I hope so. First off, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come and share with you what we're doing with this program, and it's been a real blessing this year. Again, the Mayor summed it up there. We started with an idea a few years ago, myself and some other coaches, that we would like to do something for our girls in the way of softball. And we had the recreation leagues, and of course, the travel leagues, and it gets pretty expensive out there with the travel leagues and the time that's consumed and the cost. And we, of course, more, not just more, Burke County has really been blessed over the years with a lot of good athletes, both male and female, but the boys always had somewhere to go at the next level beyond high school, but before travel. And we just had the idea we'd like to start a program for the girls. And the best place to do that, I'm a Legionnaire, and I always thought, well, you know, Legion's already got the program in place, and why, you know, why try to reinvent it? So we've approached American Legion with it, and they're, they love the idea, and they're supportive of it, so that's what we did this year. We were able to get it going, and we had, the first year we had 11 teams, as the Mayor was talking about, some teams that came in here. We had nine different counties that came and played here in Morganton. We were able to put together 11 teams this year, and looked for that number to no doubt double or even maybe triple, because we have made a lot of contacts across the state and with the publicity that we got this year, both for the league and our teams, and the sport was really, it was great. It was wonderful. And two major TV stations that came and did articles, as well as, I think they said 15 papers. So the publicity, again, was great, and it got us out there. So moving on, we got the program going. We played all year, all summer after high school, and this is high school and first year of college. When you... And this is high school and first year of college, one year out of high school girls, same as Legion baseball. We run it with the same rules as far as your districts and areas go. We were able, we had twenty-two girls on our team this year, and we have a lot of girls. And at that age, if you're around, they work, they got a lot going on, and it's hard to really get a lot of them there. Not a lot, enough, you know, there that you want to make sure you got enough. And so we were blessed with the talent we had this year. And matter of fact, one of the girls was able to come tonight. We, it's hard to get them together when they're not playing, but, and when it's raining. The girls don't get, softball don't go well with the rain. But Shelley Mull, one of our players this year from East Burke High School, is here with us tonight. But again, one of the reasons we were able to do this is our city. Our city, and I'm a little biased with the city. Of course, some of y'all know I retired from recreation, was able to work and retire here, and I know what this city does and how they've always supported, this council has always supported our city and its endeavors, and especially when it comes to our youth programs. And it's been great. It hasn't fell off any. It's got, it's been that and better. Our new Recreation Director, Rob Winkler, I approached him with the idea because we needed a place to play, and as well as the other teams in the league. And Rob said, "No problem." You know, they support Legion program, the baseball program, and was more than willing to support us in whatever way they could with softball. And we got that. We played our, at the end of the season, we played our tournament, state tournament at Catawba Meadows Park. All of our games were played there, by the way, as well, our home games. And I asked Mr. Mayor to come out, and he threw out the first pitch, and he can tell you, we had a nice crowd down there. We had eight teams here that came in here, that played here over two nights, but the finals come down to four, and we had a great night. Teams from out of the county that otherwise wouldn't have been here. We could have been somewhere else. We just, this program's going to grow, it's going to come back, and I've got the support from the Rec Department, the city, as well as the county recreation, they've been involved with us as well. And we just want to see this program move forward, and it's going to. So, Mr. Mayor, we appreciate all that y'all do for us and have done for us over the years, and I just want to thank all of you, you folks, the council, and our Rec Department, and our city departments, and our citizens for the support we had this year. And pretty much, it's the Legion Lady Fast Pitch Program. And again, we're going to the, we're going to be recognized at the American Legion State Conference this year. So I, and again, it is the first it's ever been done in the state. We think in the nation. We don't know for sure, but there's never been a Legion Fast Pitch Program. So we think that, you know, Morganton's, we hope Morganton's the birthplace for that. So thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Thank you for all you do. Thanks. I would like one announcement to the council and to the people watching on TV. September twenty-fifth, on Monday, Family Day is going, it's not sponsored by the city, it's sponsored by the Health Department, Burke County Health Department, but Rob has lots of stuff going on at Catawba Meadows, and this is going to be September twenty-fifth, from four o'clock to seven o'clock, Family Day, games and family fun, and there's actually going to be some food if people want to come and eat. So that are the public advocacy and issues so far. Do we have anything from the municipal power agency, Sally?
Just one thing, and I will say that asking everybody tonight to continue to remember our fellow citizens and friends in Texas, and now those in Florida, Georgia, South Carolina, and everywhere. Lot of devastation and a lot of tough situations. We're very fortunate that we are not going to get that. We are getting slight remnants of the storm. We'll tell you that our guys are ready in case we have power outages tonight, and those things to take care of, and we are also ready when we get asked to send a crew. So we will be sending a three-man crew when asked, deployed out to help another community somewhere. And since this is probably a long recovery, we will be prepared to bring them home and send another crew as well.
Thank you, Sally. Under consent agenda, we have seven items. Sally, would you cover those, please?
Absolutely. Have seven items, would ask that you consider those in one motion unless somebody wants something discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, that includes two sets of minutes, regular enclosed session from August seventh, tax releases in the amount of one thousand eighty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents, some award of contracts, some work at the Glen Alpine Pump Station, which is a contract that comes in under budget this year and planned in our capital program, the Silver Creek Outfall Sewer Line Inspection Contract, again, in our budget this year, and the bid for that at forty thousand five thirty point five oh is under budget. A policy that we are asking you to approve regarding street resurfacing in times of utility breaks and utility repairs. Then purchase of several vehicles that are also within budget, and the award of a financing for two trucks, financing those at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to BB and T at an interest rate of two point one nine percent for three years. Both of those are wastewater trucks. And then finally, a memorandum of understanding between the city and Duke Energy, setting us up to receive a hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred dollars for the construction ultimately of a new trailer boat ramp and about ten parking spaces down in the vicinity of the water plant. This is a project and money that's available to us through the agreements that Duke did in the FERC relicensing process.
Would any members of council like any items removed from the agenda? I would like to remove item E, please, for further consideration. So I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the removal of item E. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda without item E, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Sally, item E is consideration of approval, a policy regarding street servicing of city streets. And I know lots of people want their street resurfaced, and we have a policy on street resurfacing, but not for utility breaks. And that's why I wanted you, if you could, please explain this new policy.
I'd be happy to, and talk a little bit about street resurfacing, because that is something very popular, and everybody wants their street resurfaced as quickly as possible and as often as possible. The reality is, is that every year, we spend close to a quarter of a million dollars resurfacing streets in the city of Morganton, and that at that rate, we'd be done with them in probably fifty or sixty years. What we actually do normally is we have a very detailed rating system that is based on national highway and transportation measurements and metrics. We rate those streets, and then we determine budget allowing and price that we're getting, quote, how many streets and what surfaces we can resurface each and every year. This policy's a little different. What we are also starting to realize is as our water and sewer systems age, and as we have become very aggressive, and each year now are budgeting dollars to rehab, to inspect, to rehabilitate, and to replace older lines, that we are doing a lot more utility work in our streets than we have in years past. And so what we got to thinking is another way that we can work toward resurfacing more streets, and also because we want the streets not only to look pretty, but we also want them to ride well and to be in good condition. So we got to thinking about the utility repairs, and what we're asking you to consider is that in a situation where we are either replacing a line or repairing a line that is a utility situation, if we are disturbing more than fifty percent of that street, and that street may be an entire street, or that street may be a section between two cross streets, a block, if you will, that you would allow us to get quotes at the time that we're doing that, because standard operating procedure, we would do nothing but patch that and wait until it comes up again in the recycling, in the resurfacing cycle. If you will allow us to get quotes and budget permitting, again, when we're disturbing more than fifty percent of that section of street, to allow us to resurface that street at the time with the utility project.
Okay. So since I brought that off the consent agenda, I'll make the motion to accept the policy regarding resurfacing of city streets with utility breaks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I move we approve the rest of the consent agenda.
That's, Forrest, I think we've already done that. We approved it with, yeah.
We did vote, didn't we?
I thought the motion was to approve it with the removal of that one.
Under new business, we have consideration of entering to a CDBG, Small Business Loan Agreement, with Giggles and Grins Three, Childcare and Learning Center for the purpose of opening an independently-owned childcare center in Morganton. Sally, you're going to do that one, I believe?
Sure. You all will recall that for quite a few years now, we have set aside a portion of our Community Development Block Grant money to support a small business loan program, and to create a revolving loan program for creating new small businesses and creating new jobs in the community. And what we are bringing before you tonight is one of those requests. So we have been requested to help fund a new childcare center that will be opening in Morganton. It is the third Giggles and Grins in Burke County, and we are looking at that. It will be on Hopewell Road? Am I right about that, right?
Yes.
On Hopewell Road. And what you have is a request for a thirty thousand dollar CDBG loan. This meets all the requirements of HUD. We have personal guarantees for the loan. We are creating the jobs. There has been an established need for more daycare and childcare center in Morganton, and we have some very seasoned folks who are doing this project, who have been involved with childcare for quite some years. So would ask that you consider doing that this year. I mean, tonight, that would be a nine-year loan, and then, as is customary with our revolving loan funds and CDBG, after half of that loan term, at four and a half years, if all the payments have been made and everything has been done timely, then we forgive the remainder of that loan, and it becomes a grant. And then we take the money that's been paid back, recycle that into our revolving loan fund, and make a new loan to a new business looking to open up and hire people.
What's the wish of council?
I move we enter into a thirty thousand dollar CDBG loan agreement with Giggles and Grins Three Childcare and Learning Center LLC for the purpose of purchasing classroom supplies, startup working capital, and to upfit the new daycare center located at five twenty-five Hopewell Road.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? Sally, this does meet our Morganton Mission two thousand thirty goal we've established way back when.
It does. Mission two thousand thirty cited that we needed to seek entrepreneurial development, tourism enhancement. There's a long list of those, and obviously, this meets the entrepreneurial development piece of that.
And would note that the facility in question was actually built and designed as a daycare center.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Okay. Next, I believe, is consideration of entering into a Main Street Small Solution Fund Loan Agreement with Corey Totem. Sally, you're going to do that one?
Sure. In two thousand and ten, the Morganton Main Street Program applied for a state grant from the state of North Carolina. We received two hundred, a little over two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars then. And what we chose to do with that was to set up a revolving loan fund that would also give us some additional dollars to support the creation of small business and jobs in downtown Morganton specifically. At that time, I will just say that the state of North Carolina really didn't want us to do a revolving loan fund. They really wanted us to take all that as grant money and give it out and be done with it, but we don't really like to do anything like anybody else. And Sharon's pretty persuasive when she sets her mind to it. And so we got them agree, to agree with us to do a revolving loan fund. Since that time, initially, we made eight loans to eight different businesses. We have had repaid loans. Out of repaid loans, we have made three additional loans since two thousand and ten, and those are also paying back. And so this is the fourth one out of our funding that we have received. We currently have a balance of eight thousand ninety-two dollars and twenty-one cents in our paid-back funds. So we are asking to use five thousand dollars to set up a new hair salon in downtown Morganton. The tenant has a five-year lease from the property owner, and would ask that you consider allowing this loan to go through tonight for five thousand dollars.
What's the wish of council?
Move we approve a loan in the amount of five thousand dollars to Corey Totem.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the loan, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And last on our agenda, I think, is a consideration to amend Chapter ten of Part eight of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Conduct in Parks and Recreation Facilities. I'll ask our city attorney to cover this, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a vague reference to the purpose of this. There's actually two things involved in this ordinance change. One is to clean up a couple of things concerning conduct in our public parks, specifically clarifying just the rules on use of alcoholic beverages as only being, you know, when it's properly, when the user has obtained a proper permit. Also clarifying just the rules in general on animals, dogs, in the parks, and where those are forbidden, the facilities where that is not permitted, except for service animals. The second part, and it's new Section eight dash one zero zero one two, concerns our new skateboard park that's under development. By statute, the city can't, in operating a skateboard park, can remove itself from any liability for injuries suffered if it does two things. Adopt this particular ordinance that requires the person riding the skateboard, or inline skates, or whatever, to wear a helmet, elbow pads, and knee pads, and post a sign to that effect on the park. The only reason for doing this, frankly, is to protect the city against liability. I have checked, and the same or extremely similar language is in place in various other cities that have skateboard parks, such as Asheville and Greensboro.
Okay. What's the wish of council?
Move to delete Chapter ten of Part eight of the Code of Ordinances and replace it with a new Chapter ten to be entitled, Conduct of New Citizens in Parks and Other Recreational Areas to Update and Clarify Rules of Conduct Within Parks and Recreational Facilities, Including Requirements for Safety Gear in Any Skateboard Operated, Skateboard Park Operated by the City.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes.
May I clarify something now?
You may clarify.
Because we've already had the phone calls and the questions, because as you know, we've had a lot of public meetings with the skating community, and have heard loud and clear that they do not want a requirement to have to wear pads, helmets, and those kinds of things. As a matter of fact, at one meeting, I said, "Well, it's your head, so I guess, you know, you can make that decision." To a couple of the young folks who really are adamant that they don't want to wear helmets. This is a measure, as the city attorney said, for the city's liability. We have not changed our intention that our skate park will be unsupervised and unmanned, and that is how it will be. There will be a sign to that effect, I am assuming, and that will be how that skate park is managed.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. John?
I'm just endorsing what Sally just said.
Right.
I saw this summer for the first time a skate park in use down in Atlantic Beach, and they had those regulations there. And seeing the speed and the liabilities that could be there, this is a good regulation for us to have.
And not to put him on the spot, but I say, "Our Recreation Director, are we moving dirt yet, Rob?"
We have moved dirt, and we have a meeting with contractor Thursday.
Meeting with contractor Thursday, for those who are out in TV land. So thank you for all you do. Anything else to come before council? If not, extend adjournance.